Welcome to the Mount Clemens City Commission Meeting for Monday, January 4th, 2021. Happy New Year, everyone. We'll call meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Do you have...
Here.
Fournier?
Here.
Goodenough?
Yeah.
Hammond?
Here.
Crag?
Here.
Mensah?
Here.
Voorhees?
Here.
Agenda item for announcements, acknowledgements, communications, and reports. We don't have any listed. Mr. Johnson, do you have any other ones?
No, ma'am.
Does anyone on the commission have any announcements? Okay, moving on to agenda item five, adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Mayor Cragg, I move that we approve the agenda as printed.
Moved by Commissioner Voorhees.
Supported.
Supported by Commissioner Campbell. Roll call, please.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Goodenough?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Crag?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
This is the portion of the meeting where we have public participation. If you would like to, if you're a member of the public and would like to participate, we allow for three minutes, if you use your full name and your residential address. I'll go ahead and collect everyone's first name for ease of a line for Zoom, and then I'll call on each individual to speak. Is there anyone from the public who would like to participate? Is there anyone from the public who would like to participate? Is there anyone? Okay, hearing none, we will move on to agenda item seven, administrative response to issues or questions raised during the previous meetings. Mr. Johnson?
At the last meeting, Commissioner Mensah asked for a list of delinquent downtown maintenance invoices. We have provided a list. There are currently five parcels that still have unpaid balances. They're technically not delinquent until they become past due at the county, but so they've got a little bit of time left.
Okay, excellent.
But there's only...
Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to agenda item eight, approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the city commission work session, meeting minutes for December 21st, 2020, and regular city commission meeting minutes for also December 21st, 2020.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Hammond, supported by Commissioner Fournier. Does anyone have any questions or discussion? I have a, in the work session agenda, I don't believe the attendance is correct. I think we were missing a few members of the, of the commission at the meeting.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
And it lists that everyone was, everyone attended, so I think that that needs to be corrected.
Okay.
Does anyone else have any? Any additions or? Okay. Roll call, please.
Fournier?
Yes.
Goodenough?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Crag?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item nine, general business. We'll move to the audit presentation. I just, and that's A1, I believe, acceptance of the fiscal ending June 30 cover letter. I'll just hand this over to you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. First, let me explain why there's three items here. Normally, we combine all these and just have a single link to them. But Nikki was unable to do that because the, the two reports from Plant Moran were password protected, and we didn't have the password, so couldn't let her do it. So she put them out there separately. There isn't three separate actions. The only action to take place is to accept the audit. But before you get to that point, I think it should be presented to you by Plant Moran. We have three people from Plant Moran online with us tonight. I think probably Lisa's going to start this off, but I'm not sure.
Yep, thanks, Don. I can take it from here. So good evening to all of you and Happy New Year. We're very pleased to be here to present the results of the June 30, 2020 audit. With me here tonight is Shewana Jackson, who is a senior manager who was new to the city's audit this year, and Dana Delboy, who is manager and has been on the account for a number of years, as have I. So similar to previous years, we do have a graph presentation that we'll go through in a minute just to give some financial highlights. And then certainly, as Don pointed out, we do have a separate letter similar to previous years again that has some observations on internal controls and overview of the audit process that, that I can cover and answer any questions on. Before we get into all of that, though, I just really wanted to say a very sincere thank you to Cliff and to Mary Ann, to the Treasury Department, really all the departments that we came into contact with during the audit. As most of you are familiar with, it's a pretty involved process to do a financial statement audit in under normal and the best of circumstances. And clearly, this year was very unusual in that we had to perform all of our audit procedures on a remote basis, which because of the pandemic, we've been working from home almost exclusively since last March. So to us, we've become very used to an audit process that's done remotely and believe we've, we've been very efficient in doing that, but we do understand for our clients, it is the first time going through it and that while we do our best to minimize additional effort, there just is more that had to be done. So we appreciate the cooperation and just the hard work of everyone at the city to accomplish this and to get everything submitted to the state by December 31st. So kudos to you. You know, we, we know you're working with limited resources, and so we do appreciate the effort and the cooperation and the great attitude through all of the challenges that we got through. So the, the end result of the audit and the most important part that we provide really is just our opinion on the financial statement. So everything in the 60-page financial statement document is drawn from information provided by the city. Our responsibility as auditors is to perform various tests in order to validate that information and make sure that it's properly presented, that all of the disclosures that the governmental accounting standards board would require are included in the financial report. And again, this year, we are issuing or have issued an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion and the highest form of assurance that an auditor can provide. So we're very pleased always to be able to report that result. What that doesn't really speak to, though, is the financial condition of the city, which again, Shewana will get into some graphs that will give a snapshot or some highlights of the financial report. And, and I guess what I would say somewhat similar to last year's report, you know, there is even in the midst of all of this, a lot of good that we will point out and touch on in the financial report. The general fund did add to fund balance again this year, and we see, have seen a lot of stability in the financial results for the city over the last few years, but certainly still a lot of challenges that we see commonly amongst all of our clients, particularly here in southeast Michigan. So continuing to look at very significant retiree healthcare obligation that, you know, isn't going away. It continues to be out there. The city is, has set up the fund and is, you know, starting to put some money aside, but certainly that's a challenge that isn't going to go away quickly. And then also just continuing to look at investment in infrastructure and other capital needs within the city, which we understand you're looking at some bonds to be issued shortly and looking for ways to address those needs. But again, those are really the, the two most common challenges we see at municipal clients and City of Mount Clemens certainly is, is not alone in, in trying to address those needs. But again, we feel like we definitely don't want to just look at the negative, but also focus on the fact of the stabilized financial condition that we've seen, which puts the city in a good position to really make decisions and, and look to the future, which certainly has its uncertainties as we sit here today in January. So with that, I will pass it over to Shewana to pull through our graph presentation, and then we're happy to answer questions, probably easiest just given this format to do questions at the end. We can certainly go back to graphs if we need to, and then I'll touch on any questions on our separately issued letter. Shewana?
All right. So... Had to click on the right screen. Sorry about that. So we'll start with looking at a four-year trend of general fund revenue between 2017 and 2020. What we'll see looking compared to the direct prior year is a slight decrease in revenues from the prior year, but as Lisa mentioned, kind of bright point in that is that there's still an increase in 2020 compared to prior years, so compared to 17 and 18. Looking at the breakout of that revenue by category, what you'll see is property taxes has a very strong increase compared to 2019, and that's been a consistent trend going back to 2017. And where those decreases occurred compared to prior year were primarily in your state shared revenue or state payments, as well as charges for services and permits. So things like parking, licenses, fees, other permits, rents, and things like that. And that decrease is expected, given the current environment with the pandemic and the impact that's had, that's had, not only just across the state, but really across the world. So some of those services, seeing a decrease in some of those services is definitely not expected, or not unexpected, rather, compared to prior years. Looking at the four-year trend for expenditures, we're seeing a slight but steady increase year over year, which is absolutely expected, given inflation and other factors. Looking at the breakout of those expenses between categories, those increases were primarily in general government, as well as public safety, and drilling down into those increases, what we'll see is that's primarily, primarily related to legacy costs. So considering your pension, your OPEB expenses and increases in that year over year has been the primary driver of those increases in expenses from prior year, but totally not unexpected to see increases in expenses. Looking at fund balance, we did want to show this over a longer period of time, so not just a four-year trend, because it really tells a strong story for the city. What you'll see is that the city has been building fund balance pretty consistently within the last several years, but it really just shows the growth going back to 2003, now to 2020, what that growth has looked like. Some of the major factors here, looking at this historical analysis back in 2005, an increase came from outsourcing of the police department, so that created an increase. And some of the volatility again that you'll see in 2014, 15 came really from the implementation of new standards, which required for the first time for the pension liability to come on to the city's books and be recorded. And so that, that's been some of the major, major fluctuations you'll see over this historical analysis, but really does show that at about $7 million at the end of 2020, that the, the city was able to increase general fund fund balance compared to prior years, despite the challenges of the pandemic and other challenges that might have occurred during the year financially.
Yeah, I, I might also just point out on that slide too, just to say, you know, we, we include this lengthier history to show, you know, the positive trends in fund balance, but then also as the reminder of how quickly it can decline. So when we look at those years from 2003, and certainly if we had a couple more years, you would see that pretty quick decline that required very significant actions to be taken to cut back and just change the whole, you know, base cost structure of providing services by the city. And then again, the impact of the recession in the later years, and then certainly how the heavily override helped rebuild that. But again, as, can take a few years to build it up, but then it can very quickly start to decline.
So moving on to looking at the net pension liability. And with this graph, of course, we wanted to make sure you guys were lively this evening at 7:00 PM. It might be a little confusing, but to kind of explain what this is doing. So looking at 2018, you'll see a net pension asset, so a positive balance above zero compared to 2019 and 2020, which is showing a net pension liability. From 2019 to 2020, you'll see that that net pension liability has increased compared to the prior year, and that increase is primarily due to volatility in investment earnings. So took a little bit of a hit, which impacted the fiduciary net position that was available to, to, to fund the liability. But we do want to point out that the funded percentage there, while slightly down, is still over 90% for the city, which is consistent with what we're seeing across communities in, in Michigan, and definitely a, a strong funding percentage, despite again, the, the impacts of the recession, or I'm sorry, of the pandemic. Looking at the net OPEB liability, no, this one is a little bit more straightforward as it's always been presented as a liability going back to 2018. However, the, the bright side to this story is that that liability is decreasing. So, and the funded percentage as a result is also increasing. So modest increases from 1% to 2% in 2020, but still showing a decrease in that liability and an increase in the funded percentage. So for many communities across Michigan and really across the nation, it'll just be a focus to kind of keep increasing that funding percentage for the OPEB liability. Looking at the water supply system and just doing a five-year track on that going back to 2016, the story here really is just that there has been a consistent and steady increase in unrestricted cash balances for the water supply system. And that orange-ish kind of line there is showing the debt service, so principal and interest owed on debt, and shows that the water supply system has well and above beyond the available unrestricted cash balance to service debt. And we'll see the same story here, which with the sewage disposal system, with actually an even greater excess of unrestricted cash balance compared to the required debt service principal and interest payments. So just a healthy cash balance there to cover any debt related to the sewage disposal system. And with that, before Lisa goes into the letter, we did just want to pause and see if there were any questions on the financial results that we could address.
I think that, that this slide presentation was really very well done. And actually, I would like copies of the slide presentation so that I can refer back to them when we start talking about the budget in April. This will give me some background information. It'll be a great thing, I think, for all of the commission to have for, you know, for reference. So that would really be appreciated. And, and I went through both the financial report with supplemental information, and I went through, you know, the letter. And I have unfortunately, a couple pages of questions, so I don't know if you want me to ask them now or wait.
I mean, really, that's, that's up to you. We're certainly happy to provide, you know, copies of the graphs, a PDF. That's easy enough. And on the questions, we're happy to address them now, or however you would prefer.
Well, how about we, I, I bring them up after the letter, because you might answer some of my questions when you're talking about the letter and the, and the supplemental information.
That's fair, certainly. You're welcome, sorry.
Go ahead, Lisa.
Okay, then I will, I will move on to the letter. So similarly with previous years, this letter is broken down into three sections. The first section is related to our observations on internal control matters identified through the course of the audit. Here's where we're reporting in writing to you. As we've discussed in the past, our financial statement audit isn't intended to be an audit of internal controls per se, but we do understand internal controls to plan our audit procedures and assess risks. And certainly, if there are deficiencies that we come across, we want to bring those to your attention as the governing body for the city. There are items in here that will be similar to previous years. So as we've discussed, again, given kind of the smaller staffing size of the city, it's, I would say fairly common that there will be audit adjustments that we note through the course of our audit, items to be corrected. So we do have an item on here about journal entries that we identified through the course of the audit and bringing that to your attention. Again, this was not related to day-to-day accounting matters, but really those year-end adjustments necessary for certain accruals and requirements of various GASBs that we assisted with in identifying and suggesting to the city to be posted. We, again, we had a recurring item about accounting for the ICE arena, which, as you know, is, is handled by a third-party management company. And specifically within the ICE arena, we had several items that we noted that needed to be corrected, and those have been posted and corrected in the financial statements that you have. And then segregation of duties, common with a smaller staffing size and smaller departments, that there are certain responsibilities that ideally would be separated to create a stronger set of internal control within the city. So we do encourage, even in a small office setting, to think about ways that duties can be separated and those checks and balances are in place. I know that Finance Director has taken these to heart and, and we're considering, and we're happy to consult with him on ways that things may be able to be separated, even with the current staffing situation, in order to try to correct some of these, some of these deficiencies that we noted. And then the last item that we noticed in here is a best practice of a periodic review of user access within the system to make sure that those people who have responsibilities within the accounting system have the correct level of access and not too much access beyond what's necessary to carry out their job duty. So sometimes that's something that if people change positions, there's not always a review in place to make sure that the commensurate change is made to their user access. So we recommend that as a best practice to be done and, and documented on a periodic basis. Within section two of the letter, this is where we discuss more qualitatively, how did the audit go? Not so much focused on internal control or financial results, but really to inform you of anything unusual or unexpected that came up during the course of the audit. Really, nothing significant to point out in this section of the letter. You know, GESBI did do us a little bit of a favor this year in light of everything going on in the world and allowed the deferral of certain accounting standards that we expected to implement for 2020. So there weren't any new accounting standards that were implemented and really no unusual or unexpected issues that came up during the course of the audit. We did again point out certain financial statement adjustments that we identified and were posted within the financial records. That's discussed in this letter as well. So really, I will pause there and address any questions as best I can.
So most of my questions center around the first part of your, you know, of your, your letter. And we've talked about the lack of segregation of duties, you know, in 17, in 18, in 19. I don't see that changing any, anytime soon. So I just made a note of that. I was confused about, under the ICE arena accounting, you have certain accruals where identified due to the city's general ledger review controls not detecting that adjustments were needed, the lack of necessary year-end accrual adjustments and financial settlement, presentation, or disclosure items could result in a potential misstatement. Has, has that been corrected?
Any adjustments that we suggested have been posted. So the comment is really just saying, in the absence of our audit, there could have been adjustments that weren't identified.
Okay. Well, I seem to remember us last year having some accounting issues with the ICE arena. So is this something where we need to, the city needs to take a tighter or closer look at it on a more regular basis, or that we need to hire an auditing firm on a more, you know, a more frequent basis throughout the year?
I mean, our, our recommendation is always to see if there are ways within, you know, the existing functions at the city to address things like this, as opposed to having to hire an outside party. So if there are ways to have more regular review in place, that's, that would be our first recommendation.
And Cliff, Mr. Mason, you've got that recommendation?
Yeah, see Denise, Lisa, a very good presentation, Lisa.
Thank you.
Enjoyed it. Yeah, to answer your question, Denise, fellow members of the commission, we are already right in the middle of changing many facets of the accounting operation of the ICE arena. Now, this is the topic I've had with Mr. Johnson. And knowing that, we, we do have issues over there. Big issue is they have a different accounting system. They have a QuickBooks system. We don't. And, but we, in discussing with Don, and there's another young lady who I work with out of the consulting side of Plant Moran. And we've, I've come to the mindset, and we're already starting to implement this, we're going to hire a person one day a month, day and a half a month. Now, this person is going to be off the recommendation, I believe, off the Plant Moran consulting side. If not, I will find this person to work with the young lady at the arena, and we will be balancing her books to my books on a monthly basis. What it is, she does a very, that's, at the arena, the young lady does a very good job, but she don't count. She basically posts bills to pay checks. And we want to do something more than that, but we want to teach her how to use the QuickBooks function more efficiently, so at the end of the year, we don't have these problems that pop up. And again, since there's only two in my office, I have a hard time getting back and forth to the arena. You know, it's particularly last year, a little bit more difficult because of a health problem. It's now behind me, thank God. But anyways, we are fixing this problem right now as we talk, and we will hopefully by, I would say, end of February, be balancing her books to our books within City Hall on a monthly basis.
So can I just add one thing?
I think that's wonderful.
Yes, I do, I do too, and I...
Go ahead, Lauren.
The thing that we have to, I think, work at this year is to make sure that these adjustments, including the ICE arena, are found before Plant Moran comes in. And even though we're a very small team, I think there are ways to do segregation of duties where we can look over each other's shoulders. I know in my own operations, I have very, very few people, but we avoid this material weakness by having others look at things for us and review things on a timely basis. So I would appreciate that if Plant Moran, rather than just repeating this comment year after year after year, if we can look for some of those ways to maybe compensate for the smaller staff and find ways to do the regular review that we need to do so we don't have too many year-end adjustments. The other thing I wanted to mention too is, we've had, what bothered, bothered me a little bit about the year-end adjustments is we have had Plant Moran, a extra person in here for the entire year, I believe. And so I was a little disappointed in that, that we haven't been, those have not been highlighted or found, or just overall taken care of as we go along. Can you tell me if the number of adjustments has changed? Can you tell me if the number of adjustments has changed much, or if we're getting better? If it's just, but a material weakness is still the worst?
Understood. Well, we only get two, two levels, material weakness and significant deficiency. And we know that material weakness sounds, sounds very severe. And it's serious. It's definitely something to be taken seriously, but we don't have a very wide scale to rate things on. And certainly, you know, as we've talked about, when it deals more with end-of-year adjustments, that is less of a concern necessarily than if it were an ongoing, you know, the city didn't post cash properly or something, that's more part of the day-to-day operations. That clearly is more concerning from an audit perspective. And really, I would say, the types of things were less in scope this year. So I would say there has been improvement, and certainly appreciate your concern there. We're just kind of saddled with this particular language of material weakness when we have to consider what the potential adjustments could have been, had we not been performing the audit. But definitely.
That's the whole point of it, right? Yeah, that's the whole point, is that material adjustment could be required if we don't have these types of controls. Otherwise, we could get a significant deficiency, which I would much prefer than a material weakness any day. So actually, I'd prefer neither of the above. But I just think that we need to look for ways to make this work better than just saying we're too little to make it happen. I think there are ways to make it happen, and I'd be happy to give you a few of mine.
I had one further question about, for Cliff, about user access review.
Yes.
Hey, Cliff, Mr. Mason, have you, it's noted here in the letter that we had no formal review of users to make sure that, you know, users with access are appropriate. Do we have some kind of a check system or check-in system for either new hires, people retiring, or job changes so that we immediately remove them from having access to this information, if it is no longer appropriate?
Yeah, Denise, right now, that's been, they're handled by Sarah Price's office. Particularly Jennifer is the, probably the most, what we believe, she has the most background in the IT. And she is one that, if we have people move around or have been changes, she's the one we go to to actually make these changes. Now, as to scope who's doing what, I cannot tell you specifically who has what access to the system or not in detail. But certainly, that's something, when I go in the office tomorrow, I can sit down with her and find out who has that type of capability to get onto the system or not. But no, when people leave or move around, no, that is something that I should sit down with Rob from High Tech, and they make those changes. And I have asked real quickly, I do ask Sarah on occasion, Sarah, you ever take a look on the system, particularly on the weekend, who's on it, who's off it? And I'm just, you know, just, again, internal control, if anybody's on it that maybe shouldn't be on there. And the few, a couple of times I've asked her that, she says, Cliff, everything has been clean. Doesn't mean it can't happen, but these are, we do talk about it. But we only have a couple of people who have the ability to go on and do this type of background check.
Okay, thank you very much, Cliff.
All right.
That's the end of my questions for this part.
So I don't know, Denise, if you had any questions for the rest of the letter, but rather than me going through all of my questions on the remainder of the letter, is there anything, there's a lot of information here, right? And a lot of things that we need to comply with as we go along, some of which we should have complied with already. Otherwise, we're in trouble on a couple of these end dates. Can you? I suppose most of this is in Section 3. But can you tell us if we're on the right road here? If there's any of these areas, rather than going through them one by one, if there's any of these areas we are not ready for, or we need to pay particular attention to, or something? I mean, we've got the.
Yeah, I mean, I'd say, I mean, there aren't any that I would say that the city is behind on. I mean, the one that we recommend, just keeping a very close eye on, obviously, is our COVID-19 Resource Center that we have. Just where we have updates on new grant money that is released or impact of these kinds of financing on governmental entities. So we certainly recommend all communities keep a closer eye on that. And again, the cybersecurity item is just a best practice, not that we discovered anything that, any incidents during the year, but just in these times of remote work and, you know, changes and who's doing what perhaps because of remote work situations, we bring that to the attention of all of our clients, because it is an area that we've seen increased activities with hackers trying to take advantage of current situations. But, you know, in terms of some of the other legislative items out there, and we've talked to Cliff and to Don about the changes to the Uniform Chart of Accounts that are coming, and we know that's on their radar screen. And a lot of these other items are just, again, more informational, but nothing where I'd say the city has fallen behind or that I'm overly concerned about.
So you feel good that we've, you know, that we're, we have done what we need to, to be in compliance as we go forward and meet the deadlines that you've indicated are in here.
Yes.
Before we met them. Hopefully, we, I like the one about the December 31st was to be included in the snow payment calculation. Is that really the name of the calculation? For the Act 51 report due date?
I would have to look at that again to see.
The last, in that first paragraph, I never heard it called that, that's all I.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with seeing that term, but doesn't mean it's wrong.
But I was just, the other, I mean, the more, not that I'm trying to gotcha there. But it was December 31st, had to be the Act 51.
Right, yep.
So I assume it was submitted.
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
And the Uniform Chart of Accounts has to be implemented now in two years? We have two years to do that now?
I believe we got to start this on 7/1/2022, is that not correctly, Lisa? And that will be done by BSNA on their system.
I believe it's actually after that, because it's fiscal year's ending after October 31st of 2022. So it would be the year ended, okay, sorry, yes. So it's the year ended June 30th of 2023, so yes, 7/1 of '22.
Yes. And like I said, that would be, if I'm not mistaken, BSNA being one of their clients, will be the ones who will be doing that change for us, I believe.
Well, that's not exactly right. We're using their tool to do it.
Right.
It's still us deciding, you know, which accounts are going to be used and how they're going to be mapped.
And any changes that need to be made. Yep.
It's also a good time, I would think, to review the whole chart of accounts and make sure we're, we haven't got too many or too few.
We got too many.
We agree.
We have way too many.
Way too many.
Totally, way too many. So it's, it's a chance to clean up.
Absolutely.
Okay, I have no other questions, as long as you say we are in compliance.
Okay, then I will go on to the financial report with supplemental information, where I made some notes. And a couple of these are just, are pointing out some good things. I'm looking at page 3, and I wanted to point out, under government activities, we have an increase in assets and a decrease in liabilities, and I thought that that was a good thing. And so I wanted to give Cliff, in addition, on the very next page, under business-type activities, again, you know, this is a, this is a very nice report, and I just wanted to give a well-done, even though it's probably from pandemic, you know, expenses and gains. So, but I wanted to say thank you and very well-done to Cliff and his staff. I was looking at page 6 about the, you have a note at the bottom paragraph about the fund balance increase and the decrease in the OPEB. You've mentioned it already. That $16 million decrease in the OPEB from $52 million to $36 million, that, again, needs to be noted as a well-done. That's a great thing. It's still a huge liability, as Lisa said earlier, but still, that's, you know, $16 million in just a couple of years, that's absolutely excellent. I looked at page 8, under the Internal Service Fund, and I just wanted to, you know, I noted that it had a decrease of $111,000. And I know Mr. Wood is on this call, and this is talking about increased expenses of an aging fleet. We know that he needs some dump trucks and some other vehicles. We know that the fire department is going to need probably a ladder truck within, you know, the next five years. So this is a reminder to us to get a hold of those, those, you know, expenses and get something, you know, something budgeted for them. On page 30, let me just flip here. I'm looking at the construction code fees. We have a shortfall of $393,000 in the construction code fees. So I'm assuming Mr. Johnson or Mr. Mason, that we are going to have some kind of a discussion for the next budget year, that we're going to have to increase these fees, so that we don't have this kind of shortfall. And then.
Can I comment on that? Isn't that due to, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Johnson, but isn't that due to the hospital having a large construction project for, and all of those fees and?
The problem with big projects is it causes a real distortion, because the permit fees have to be booked and rec, you know, have to be recognized at the beginning when they're collected. And I've gotten into this with other auditors before, and they wouldn't let me do what I'd really like to do, is to assign them to the period in which the expenditure matches. But yeah.
So last year was somewhat anomalous in there being an increase, because there was a large fee that was collected.
That is correct.
Yeah. I don't think it reflects a fee that we're charging, is what I'm trying to point out.
Okay, so I'm looking at page 37, and it was mentioned already, I'm looking at the long-term debt and the bonds for the ICE Arena, of course, is not included in this. I just wanted to, you know, point that out, make that known, and.
Because they haven't been issued yet.
Yeah, I know, but it's coming. It'll need to be in the next one. So I'm looking at now, I'm kind of comparing page 44. On the pension plan, on page 44, the rate of return, our money-weighted rate of return on the pension plan investments was 1.77%. And then I looked at the rate of investment return on OPEB on page 47 and the long-term, you know, rate of return on those. And I was just kind of disappointed that the rate of return was only 1.77%. And I wondered if we are going to look at that, to have a conversation, you know, with our, you know, banker or something, because that's pretty low.
It is very low, but in this last year, especially the last several months, it has been very low. In fact, 1.77 isn't too bad. I can imagine it will go lower. Of course, you want riskier investments, and that's the scary part, right? You trade risk for a return.
I don't know, my personal stock has done pretty darn well.
A riskier investment, you're in the stock market, it is definitely better. It's been good, but it's not always the best for our ins capital.
All right, those are, that's what I've got.
Well, here's what we got to remember too, members of the commission, is that, if I'm not mistaken, Lisa, you can correct me if I'm wrong, 12/12/31/2019, we don't do the whole year, and that we're using the Gabriel Roder report. And therefore, I go back to what Laura just said, the time period that the investment analysis and rate of return was calculated was at a pretty low point. Now, when you go to the file, to the next coming year, succeeding year, you're going to see that number increase quite a bit. So you've got to be, you've got to know what time period the analysis is covering. In fact, we have, I'll be talking with our, we have a retirement board meeting on the 11th. And I clarify this, we have the, our actuary coming in who does this report from Gabriel Roder, and I will confirm that the time period, the time period used to provide these numbers was at a time when the equities actually were, had decreased quite a bit. And when I talked to Louise from Gabriel Roder here about two weeks ago, because I noticed that we went down $6 million in our pension fund, you know, as far as our liability in Q6, I said, Louise, can we put our finger on any one item here? Because I did put more money into the pension plan. And she said, Cliff, there were several things, but the biggest thing was the timing difference when we actually do our analysis. So that plays a big part, but I will confirm to what I just told to the members right now to ensure that I'm giving you correct information.
Thank you.
All right.
Do we have any other questions for either the Plant and Moran staff or our own staff? Okay, hearing none, we will, I'll entertain a motion to accept the Plant and Moran audit.
I move the Mount Clemens City Commission hereby accept the city's financial report and management letter for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2020, together with the independent auditor's opinion letter and report on internal controls on financial reporting for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2020, as presented.
Thank you. Do I have a support?
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Mensah, supported by Commissioner Fournier. Anyone have any questions or comments?
Okay, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Good enough.
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Lawrence?
Yes.
Campbell? Campbell?
Is he muted?
He's no longer on the call.
Oh, we lost him. Okay.
Fournier?
Yes.
Very good. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Shawana, for the report. We appreciate all of your work.
Thank you all. It's a pleasure to serve the city, and we look forward to speaking with you all soon and hopefully seeing you in person as well.
Definitely. Thank you again.
Bye-bye.
Okay, we'll move on to General Business 9B. Approve the interlocal agreement with Macomb County for the designated assessor. Have a motion, please.
I move to approve the interlocal agreement between the City of Mount Clemens and Macomb County and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Excellent. Okay, Mr., oh, I moved by Commissioner Hammond. Do I have a support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Fournier. Mr. Johnson, do you want to go ahead and talk about this?
Just a little bit. This is something that every county has. This is, uh, something that every county has to do. This person, unless there's a problem with our own assessing, does not get involved in it. Uh, but he is the person that's designated by the county that might step in if if they should discover that we're not doing the job. Uh, I should also add that the actual agreement, uh, has been reviewed, uh, by City Attorney Murray. Uh, and he has no problems with it.
Does anyone have any questions or comments on this? Okay, hearing none, roll call, please.
Hammond?
Yes.
Crab?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Maurice?
Yes.
Campbell? Fournier?
Yes.
Good enough?
Yes.
Agenda item nine C, approve purchases and payments of invoices. I have a motion.
Move to approve purchases of invoices as presented.
Moved by Commissioner Fournier.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Hammond. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Hearing none. Uh, roll call, please.
Crab?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Maurice?
Yes.
Campbell? Fournier?
Yes.
Good enough?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Agenda item ten, consent agenda, approve the two thousand twenty-one D D A calendar of events. Could have a motion, please.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Moved by Commissioner Mensah.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Fournier. Roll call, please.
Mensah?
Yep.
Maurice?
Yes.
Campbell? Fournier?
Yes.
Good enough?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Crab?
Yes. Agenda item eleven, city manager's report, city manager Johnson.
Thank you.
Because I wanted, I lost internet connection, and I got connected back in.
Okay, very good. We're over on agenda item eleven for the city manager's report.
Okay.
Thanks, Mr., thank you, Commissioner Campbell.
Let's start off with the shutdown. Uh, City Hall is not shut down anymore. We reopen today. Uh, COVID vaccine, uh, Macomb County started administering the vaccine to first responders on December eighteenth. We've got ten firefighters who have been reported as having received the first dose of the two-dose regimen. Uh, also, uh, they've started administering, uh, vaccines to nursing home residents and staff uh, in Michigan that started on December twenty-eighth. And we still do not know when the vaccine will be available to the general public. Uh, virtual meetings like this one, uh, our authority to continue virtual public meetings was extended until March thirty-first, uh, two thousand twenty-one and December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one, if a state or local state of emergency is declared. Uh, this was done by Public Act two fifty-four of two thousand twenty, which amended the Michigan Opens Meetings Act, and that was signed by the governor on December twenty-second. Uh, branding, uh, I've got a committee together to review proposals, and proposals are due on Wednesday, January sixth. Uh, we're hoping to have selection of the firm before the city commission in February. Uh, arena bonds, we have a virtual reading meeting, uh, with the analysts from Standard and Poor's Financial Services scheduled for January eighth, that's Friday. Uh, we actually have a due diligence meeting, uh, with our own crew to go over, uh, the questions we expect the analysts to be asking, uh, next tomorrow. Then I've got the future agendas for the next few meetings, uh, listed as usual.
Does anyone have any questions for City Manager Johnson? Hearing none, we'll move on to our second, um, public participation portion of the meeting. Um, if you are a member of the public, all that we ask is that you give us your full name, your residential address, and you abide by our two-minute rule. I'll go ahead and ask for the first names of those who would like to speak, and then I will call on you individually, um, so that we're not talking over each other. Um, is there anyone from the public at this time who would like to get in line to participate?
Thomas Barnes, two ninety-one Jones Street.
So thanks, Thomas. Um, is there anyone else who would like to get in line to participate? Okay, hearing none, Mr. Barnes, um, if you could just give us your name and address again, and then, um, I will start your two minutes.
Thomas Barnes, two ninety-one Jones Street, Mount Clemens, Michigan. Uh, first, I would like to say thank you to the D D A and all those involved in putting together the fireworks for the New Year's holiday. It was absolutely amazing. It was awesome. Um, people loved just having a place to go, um, with all the things that twenty twenty brought and all the things that were taken away from our communities. Just to have something positive, um, I think went a long way to kind of usher us into the new year. Um, I I want to first start by saying that I I am not a financial analyst by any stretch of the imagination, but this is the the third year I've sat in on this meeting with Plant Moran, and my question to the entire commission, and I I let me direct it to the city manager first, is when does the city of Mount Clemens stop acting like the lights are going to get cut off? When is there going to be some some money to bring back city services? Because looking at the general fund fund balance from Plant Moran, it seems as if the city's in a lot better financial position than we were back in two thousand and five, when the city decided to do away with the police department, the Parks and Recreation Department, and a lot of other city services, these quality of life services that we all enjoyed as children growing up in the city of Mount Clemens. So at what point do we get, where is the turnaround point where we can start turning the lights back on again?
Thank you. We'll go ahead and request, is there one, any more public participation? Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and move on to Commissioner's comments. And we will start with Mr. Campbell.
I would just like to say thank you to all of the city administration and to Plant Moran and all the employees who have helped put the city in a good financial situation in light of the events that took place last year. I know we have a lot of challenges ahead of us, but I believe based off of what we heard tonight, we have a good footing to help us get through what we are going to be, uh, approaching next year with regards to funding cuts, et cetera. So thank you to all of the employees and administration, past and present, for all of this. Thank you.
Yeah, um, Commissioner Goodenough?
Um, I would just like to say that I was very impressed by the numbers tonight that we heard from Plant Moran. And, uh, I, although I am new and I am not a financial analyst, but I do understand budgets and finance, and so I guess I would have to agree with Mr. Barnes of, uh, when we can see some things are going to change or maybe move in a different direction for the city of Mount Clemens. Uh, being a, uh, long-time standing member of this community, I remember quite a few things that Mr. Barnes was referencing, and so I kind of have to agree with him. So I'd like to see something like that or some conversation moving forward. In addition to that, I wanted to remind everyone, on January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one, uh, the Minister Alliance will be having their, um, service online. Uh, I will post it on, uh, my page if it's not already posted on someone else's page, uh, from nine AM to eight P. Guys would like to donate to that, I will put that information online. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you. Commissioner Fournier?
First, I'd like to wish all of my fellow commissioners and the city staff and all of the residents Happy New Year. I agree that we had a very good report tonight from Plant Moran, and I'm hoping that we can work together. I know that I take that letter a little bit more personally than some do, but I would, I don't think that the material weaknesses, as they call them in the letter, really reflect all the work that has been done. And, um, I would really like to see us be able to to work through that this year and knock that one out of the park, so we get a non-material weakness. Um, so thank you, Mr. Mason, and all of of the staff for your hard work on that, um, that letter. And I also want to say thank you to all the, uh, D P W people for, we had some untimely snowfalls this holiday weekend or week. And, um, I know it probably interfered with some of your, uh, the activities you had planned for the holiday. We just appreciated all your hard work. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Mensah?
Finance Director Mason, great job on working with Plant Moran and getting us a report that gave us some really good information and some really good news. I am particularly pleased about the fund balance. Um, I think that this will give us some breathing room, um, for things that we need to, you know, to, uh, equipment that we need, updates that we need to make. And I think that out of that, we need to consider the fact that the segregated positions, we have talked about these since two thousand and seventeen. And it might be time to segregate I T from finance. Um, I I I think that's, that would be a, should be a a consideration in the upcoming, uh, twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two budget. Um, and, uh, I just want to wish everyone a, uh, a Happy New Year. I hope that, uh, this new year brings everyone some peace, love, and joy. Because it, last year, I'm very glad it's over. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hammond?
Thank you. I also would like to say Happy New Year to everyone, and I also agree with, um, Commissioner Goodenough on have made progress within the city, but it's time to start making some changes, um, to give back to the community and then, um, start making things happen. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Maurice?
Thank you. I would first like to wish all the citizens of Mount Clemens, along with the staff and employees, a very blessed and Happy New Year. On December the eighteenth, the city of Mount Clemens lost a very special individual, Jim Taylor. Mr. Taylor and his brother Lee were employees of the city sanitation department, with Jim reaching the rank of superintendent before his retirement in nineteen eighty-five, after thirty years of service. Mr. Taylor always greeted you with a smile and a kind word. He will be missed. I wish to express my thanks to the Public Works Department for assaulting the intersections on New Year's Day. And also, they came through and, um, the street sweeper did my gutters today, so they were, they looked great. Again, thank you. And with that, once a Clemite, always a Clemite.
Thank you. Um, I would like to thank Plant, Plant Moran, um, and then also everyone at the city, including Cliff and his department, but everyone at the city who had, um, you know, anything to do with the audit, because I know it's kind of an all-encompassing experience for everyone to have to work with. And, um, I appreciate everyone's cooperation in that. Um, we are looking at a year of possibilities after coming from a year of everything feeling as though it was taken away. And we accomplished a lot in two thousand and twenty despite COVID. And I'm really proud of that, and I'm proud of everyone who made that happen within the city. And, um, to all of you, I owe you a huge, a huge thank you and a debt of gratitude for every person who participated in that, and that being every employee that we have at the city and also every, um, resident who stepped up to try to make a difference within the city. So thank you very much for taking a year that could have been an excuse to not do anything and changing it to a year, um, that we overcame a huge obstacle. Um, I am looking forward to two thousand and twenty-one, like I said, as a year of possibility. And, uh, with the new branding in the city and with our bud, our, um, our budget season upon us and our strategic plan and goals that we're already working towards, I'm really looking forward to taking those goals and establishing our budget to be based on those goals. So when Commissioner Goodenough and Commissioner Hammond and Mr. Barnes mention things like recreation and things, um, that we have established in our goals, I expect to see, I expect to see improvement that within our budget is aligned to make those things happen. And will we be able to offer everything right away? Absolutely not. But I think we need to show the city of Mount Clemens residents and the businesses that we, as a city, are taking action by putting our resources where those goals are. So I'm I'm really hopeful, and, um, more so than just hopeful, I'm really motivated and excited to get to work on this, all of these new projects that we have kind of brewing and and working on, um, at at the city level. And and welcome anyone who is wanting to, you know, see the city move in, um, in a positive direction. You know, you can always get a hold of me, Lcrop@cityofmountclemens.com. Uh, my extension at City Hall, five eight six four six nine six eight one eight, extension three one three. Feel free to give me a call and let me know how you can help or what solutions that you have, um, that we can, that we can put into action. And, um, so again, just Happy New Year, uh, thanks to the D D A for making the fireworks happen. They were great, and I know so many families enjoyed them from the safety of their car or from a socially distant, uh, space in downtown. And, um, we were able to take, make a safe event, and that was a great thing. So, um, I hope everyone has a new, a happy two thousand and twenty-one. And with that, I will, um, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mayor Crop, I move that we adjourn.
The board.
Moved by Commissioner Voorhees, supported by Commissioner Campbell. Uh, roll call, please.
Maurice?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Good enough?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Crab?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. I hope that all of you have a great, safe, uh, safe week. We'll see you, uh, in two Mondays. Take care. Good night.
Good night. Good night.
Night, everyone.